All right, so I am going to call the Grotton Board of Education regular meeting to order. Today is November 22nd and it's 6:00 PM. And yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. And so the first thing that we're will do is do the pledge of allegiance. The flag is in front of us. And Jamie, would you be willing to lead us?
I would go too.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
We proudly declare that we stand America indivisible, indivisible, just as strong.
All right, so the first order of business is in the town charter. Well, it kind of talks about sort of the new boards and elected members. And today, we are going to, because this is our regular board meeting, for Lee, Rosemary, and Jane, you don't have to be done with us yet because you still got December 6th. Because we normally don't have a committee of the whole meeting.
So I have two more meetings.
So, but this is our, this would be, this is gonna, this is your last regular board meeting. And so, what I, what we'd like to do is just to honor your service. And Rosemary, we would love to honor your service as well. And my understanding is that Jane is not able to be here tonight. But we would also like to honor Jane Giuliani. But Lee. I am so excited. On behalf of the Board of Education, to give you this plaque that says, Lee White, that's you. And it has the Grotton seal. And it says, this is presented to Lee White, Grotton Board of Education, 2015 to 2021. Wow. And so in recognition of your loyal service, dedication, and commitment to the children in the Grotton Public Schools. I thank Lee a lot for her incredible guidance. Specifically, I think, your passion around food coincided with how our food service program evolved. And your passion for food allowed us to think about the snack bar at Eastern Point Beach. And how you were such a champion of that. And took a really great idea that Sam and his staff had and to really kind of work through that. But just to always be thinking about about the kids and about our district. For that, I thank you very much for that.
It has been my pleasure. Thank you.
And you're amazing. I did a turn of the page for those who didn't, on the email. I did put in that Lee, I am really gonna miss your food.
My food, yes.
Because she would come in with some really great treats. But I hope that you're not a stranger to the district. And I know that you're still very active in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rosemary, come on down. So Rosemary, I would just to also make sure that we get this sent to you. You also receive a plaque that has your name on it. And that your years of service was from 2016 to 2021. And so, the Board of Education would love to thank you for your dedication to the district and how you really worked really hard at giving us those connections to the gas as a board member to that. And also, you're just working in the community with, in services. And so, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your always thoughtful comments and great puns. I just wanted to say thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your service. But remember, you'll have a committee of the whole meeting on December 6th.
And I'll be there. And you're very welcome. And it has been a real honor for me to be part of the group. And I like promoting health especially.
Yep, and your thoughtful conversations and bringing that to the forefront, I think, has been very helpful for the district. So thank you.
Thank you.
I thank both you and Lee for all your help with policy. We really cranked it out, girl. Lots done together. So Sam, we did.
No, Jane is not with us. She also is receiving a plaque. And she served on the Board of Education for four years. And so, we'd like to recognize Jane and her steadfastness to the district. So once again, thanks to Jane. Got me summarized. All right. All right. So this is the, the next section of the meeting is comments from citizens. And Joan, I don't know if there's anyone on our chat that has asked to speak. But this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. And citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Grotton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens' portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentation on Zoom, or if you're here, there is not a podium, and state their names and addresses for the record. And Ms. Joan, I heard you say that we don't have.
No, I'm looking at the screen.
Okay. And is there anyone here? All right. Hearing no comments from the citizens, we will not have a response from the citizens. And we're moving off to our student representative reports. And so, this young man next to me is Isaiah. I'm gonna have you introduce yourself. This is, I know you've been to other board meetings by Zoom, but he is here in person. And so, I would love to welcome you. And as I mentioned to you through my email, is that this board very much really respects, and you guys have helped move us in different directions because of your youth force. And so, you sitting at this table is not just because we want it to look good, is that we really appreciate the voice that you hold. And so, welcome. And I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to share. Oh, and then we're gonna move the speaker closer to you so that you can be heard.
Okay. I'm adding a few things. I just have like a list on my phone.
Super.
Just updating you guys on a few things that happened at our school so far. We just had a tailgate, the football game. And it was actually pretty successful. We had a bunch of different garden variety games, and there was food. And we had our homecoming dance a couple weeks ago, which is also a great success. And the senior class really planned it. I'm a junior. But they did a really great job. And I think they sold over 500 tickets.
Wow. And it's all outdoors.
Yeah.
Nice.
We were able to get enough volunteers to help watch the event. And also, right now, we're in the middle of our Spirit Week for a pep rally that we're doing tomorrow, which is sort of like a pep parade on the football field. And the first day of Spirit Week was Thursday, last Thursday. And it was trying to run blank. Oh, throwback Thursday. And there are decent people that participate, including me. And then Friday was Country Friday. Today was Neon Monday, and then tomorrow is just like Fitch colors. So each class has their different colors they wear for the pep parade. Oh, another exciting thing. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but our boys soccer team played in the state championship over the weekend. And even though they didn't win, they played amazing. I think one of the players, they hadn't won a state game ever before this year, which I thought was really amazing. Actually, am I allowed to ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, my student council advisor and I were wondering if would it ever be possible for us to be able to use online programs, not programs, but apps such as like Fendmo or PayPal for fundraisers instead of just using cash money?
We can look into that. We have some technology, folks who might be able to get things up to the 21st century.
Perfect.
Make it a little easier for you.
Yeah.
I've got just a person I can talk to and ask.
His first student representative report, and we're gonna make a referral. And it's gonna go to policy. I would assume it needs to go to policy.
Or finance.
And finance.
Finance and facilities, yeah.
So there. So that's actually how the board works, is that oftentimes your topics that happen, and we get what's called referrals, and then it goes either to a committee. At the present moment, Jay, who is on video, he is the chair of the finances and facilities. Lee is actually the chairperson for the policy committee. And Andrea has been acting as the curriculum chair. So what we're gonna do is because we don't know what the policy implications is to have PayPal and Venmo, so that should be looked at by policy, but also if there's any financial sort of things, we're gonna send it to the finance and facilities.
Perfect.
Okay? All right.
Okay.
Any questions on the board for Isaiah? And it looks like I got Rita and then Lee.
Oh, I don't have one.
Oh, you were just waiting. Okay.
Hi. I was just wondering if you would introduce yourself to everyone in the audience, you know, the people at large.
Okay. Hi, I'm Isaiah Anderson. I'm a junior at Fitch High School. I'm the class president for my class. I play baseball. And I'm also part of the athletic committee that planned the pep parade and Spirit Week this week.
And do you still, you still collect pennies? You know, each class to see how many pennies. I mean, that was sort of a big deal at one time, and then it was donated. Do they still do that for Spirit Week?
They don't, but we've talked about doing it for our next Spirit Week.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Oh, I'm supposed to introduce myself on Zoom. I'm Rita Volkman. I'm a board member. Sorry.
Nice to meet you, Rita.
Any other questions for Isaiah? All right.
I actually have one quick one. I think Isaiah, the football team is still in the playoffs. Am I correct?
So their last game is Thanksgiving.
Right.
If they win Thursday, they have a chance to make it to the state tournament. But a few other teams have to lose them to make it in.
Right. I remember reading that. Well, good luck to them. Thank you.
Of course.
And Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Jay.
So, hi, Isaiah. My name is Jay White-Loff. I have a senior at Fitch. I just want to welcome you aboard.
Nice to meet you, Jay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on.
I know. Thank you.
Is Allison, I think, is it Allison is your other?
Ally, yes.
Ally. Is Ally on?
I do not see her online.
Okay, thank you.
She said today she's having
She did have a cheerleading event.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
So she might pop on later. You can say hello to her.
That'd be great. All right. So we're now moving on to the stu- stu- wow, I'm gonna try that one more time. Moving on to the superintendent and administrative reports. So Susan.
I'd love to be able to start with acknowledging two principals and an assistant principal who really are the recipients of the blue ribbon that was awarded to Mary Morrison, the, the whole staff and students and families. And when we closed Mary Morrison, we really moved the, most of the students and staff over to Thames River Magnet School, where Jamie Giordano is now the principal since Kathy Minor has retired. And Ada Allen and I were able to go and receive the blue ribbon on behalf of Grotton Public Schools. And I'd really like to invite them up here to talk to you a little bit about the blue ribbon and why this is such an exciting opportunity for us.
Okay, you may just slide up soon. Well, we want to hear you.
See you.
Yeah, slide one back.
Yeah.
Very talented, Jamie. So I actually, this has just been a thrill and honor, obviously, to start a brand new school and then receive this amazing honor. It really, as I said to Susan, and Susan's been saying it as well, that it is an honor for all of Grotton. In that our teachers have gone to different schools in the district, Mystic, some have gone to CK. We obviously have them. Some actually, I think, might even have popped to the middle school. But the students as well have spread out throughout the district. So as I said, it is an honor for the entire Grotton community. And we do have a wonderful plaque that was hung, and it's hung so well. I wasn't able, thanks Sam, to bring it here today. Which is fine, right? Come and see it at the, at the school. It's absolutely stunning. But I did get a, an official citation from the Attorney General of Connecticut. So I can read it if you would like to, or I could pass it around. But it was sent on October 12th, and it's the Office of the Attorney General, official citation. Be it hereby known to all that the Attorney General offers his sincere congratulations to Thames River Magnet School and recognition of being named a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School. The Attorney General extends his very best wishes on this significant occasion and expresses his high hope for continued success given on the, after 20, or 12, 2021. William Tom, Attorney General. Would you like to look at it?
I can read it.
Oh, you got it. You can read it. But I'll also defer, obviously, to Kathy and Ada, who put timeless, you know, amount of, or endless amount of time, rather, into getting that proven.
Yeah, well, we were delighted last February when Susan got the word from the state that we were one of the four schools being selected to be recognized for the national blue ribbon. There are two ways you can achieve that. One is by whole school improvement. And the other is by reducing and eliminating subgroups, that gap in our subgroup. So the second one is how we qualify, based on the state testing from the previous year. So, we proceeded in February to start the application process, which they do require. And if you have a chance to look at it, it's pretty lengthy. One of the things I've said to Susan is if you read through the application, what you see is really a more global picture. Almost everything we wrote about Mary Morrison and what we did is kind of reflected across the district. There's many things that, you know, we start with the district's mission, teaching and learning. It's that simple. And we go from there. And I even, you know, sent a copy of it to Dr. Gagnier and said, do you see what I'm seeing here? You know, that this is really reflective of all the work that's been done in the district. At least at the elementary level, that we're most familiar. So, we were just delighted, and the teachers were proud to be part of the process. Every question we had to answer, we pushed out to the teachers, and they sent feedback back. And we get into the weeds of writing it. And we're successful.
You said it was like a learning opportunity, you know, to be able to take time to reflect as a group on what went right. And you close an achievement gap, and especially at a military school where there's so many transient students. And the second time in five years is really something to be proud of. There weren't many national winners there that had two of them under their belt. And they, and they said, Val Nelson said some of the same things you're saying, that, you know, in a military community, those teachers have to really get to know the kids right away.
And so we had to really reflect on, you know, what we did that made this happen, that made our students successful. You know, we really decided that a couple of things were the, the school-wide schedule that allowed us to make sure that the resources were very equitably distributed among all students. And with regard to the transient students, whether they're military or some of our low socioeconomic students who move a lot. Some of those practices really really helped the process, along with working together on data team and intervention team and, you know, making the process work and keeping that school improvement plan really dynamic.
Ada?
So in addition to what Kathy and Jamie shared, I, you know, it was an honor to be able to go to DC. But to all of my colleagues across the district, we were there and we were accepting the award for you. Because without you, none of this would have been possible. Because your excellence with teaching really had an impact on our student achievement. So it was an honor to accept the award. But I just want to, you know, spread the love to all of my colleagues, teachers, staff, who really helped make the difference in our students' learning.
And I would also say a shout out to students and their families. You know, it's really a whole school community, a whole school district community that, you know, has put forth a tremendous effort, you know. And then to receive this kind of information in the middle of the COVID-19 era was really quite something.
Parents had to be a big part of it.
So I thank all of you. And we just have to pick a date to, you know, put the official banner, when we order the banner and see the plaque, and welcome the community and the staff, you know, to receive it kind of formally at the Thames River.
Be fun.
Magnet School. So, thank you so much.
Are there questions from the board?
I'd just like to say congratulations. I know these ladies are pretty well. But I know that the staffs that you have represented really appreciate your collaboration. And that you have, you know, you've taken the lead, but you have included them all the way. And that is extremely telling in how well your group works together and how well you come together for Grotton's kids. And that's what our purpose is, making sure our kids are all taken care of. So thank you very much. And I'm so proud of all, of us and all of you and of our kids especially. So.
Thank you.
It's a love.
Lots of love.
We'll send you off the date when this occurs.
Absolutely. Please let me
Official, official.
Yeah. Jane.
Lovely to see all of you.
Look out.
It's nice to see you all.
Yeah. It's a, it's been wonderful. I love it. Great, you everyone. Take care, Jane.
Thank you.
You too. All right, Susan, I'm going to
Oh, yeah.
If Mark, do you have permission to share the screen for us?
I do.
Can you get onto the website? So, for attendance matters. I could do it if I, I'm passing out some magnets for you that say attendance matters. They went home to all of our families, and I figured you might like one for your refrigerator too. This is part of our attendance matters campaign. Even though we're kind of in the thick of things still with tracing for COVID and making sure our kids are healthy, we have a new, what we're calling Screen and Stay, which allows kids to stay and learn as long as they've had the mitigating circumstances. And, you know, they haven't been really designated as close contact, especially with our students that are vaccinated. We look forward to having a vaccination clinic, the eighth one at Fitch High School on December 3rd, and it's bulk. Although you can still try to go on and register if someone does not show up. So, and then we've talked to the state of Connecticut about having mobile clinics for our five elementary and Grotton Middle Schools. So they will come in, I think, second week of December. First or second week, we're trying to get them. And we're trying to find a date that they'll come back so that our kids, with their parents' permission, would be fully vaccinated. And I think that would be a real advantage to the community. We certainly noticed that by offering these eight times to Fitch High School, we saw that our staff was up to 96% fully vaccinated and faculty and staff and many of our students. As a matter of fact, the middle school and high school principals say contact tracing is much easier when your child, when the students are fully vaccinated, because we know that they have that protection. So we look forward to the day that all of our children will. But of course, it would be required that parents would have to sign off a permission slip. So we will give you more information about that. Are you able to?
I sent a link to Mark.
Mark?
I emailed it to him.
Okay.
If it's easier for him to share, because I'm not in the meeting in the Zoom.
Okay. Can you share with us the Zoom link? We'll open up maybe the elementary version first.
In the meantime, can I ask a question? Absolutely. 96% is free.
Is that what you want?
Yes, that's it.
I'll ask again.
Yeah, okay. So I think that the answer is that we keep encouraging people. And the question was, what happens with the other 6% that aren't fully, or 4% that aren't fully vaccinated? And the best we can do is encourage, make it very accessible. So, that's where we are with that. So if you can see on this website, and I will be sending out the link to families so that they can get on and see it. But it talks about how important being in school is when you're healthy. When you're sick, it's really important these days that the child stays home and gets better. And sometimes it might be a sniffle or a cold or a flu bug. It might not be COVID-related, but it's still important with a fever and not feeling well that a child is able to mend. And, Mark, if you just go back up to that, because I want to show that just two days a month adds up as part of, whether it's excused or unexcused, it goes towards missing 10% of the school year if that happened every month. So it's really important that parents are kind of keeping track. And we can help you. We can, it's all on Power School, so we can let you know how the child is doing. But, you know, we, we, we learned in the past 18 months that having children in-person learning is the best way for them to learn. So we do, when a child is quarantined, however, we do provide work for them. And, you know, we have substitute teachers who can actually make connections with the children to make sure that they understand the work, and we help them through the process virtually. So, and so this just tells you some of the parameters. 18 days or more in a year is chronic absenteeism. 10 to 17 is kind of a warning sign or a yellow light. And green light is nine or fewer absences. You know, it's kind of the goal. Green light is the goal. And so we have a section or a link like this for every level. This one, it was for elementary. We have a middle school level and a high school level. So, with more information. So I will be sending out the links, so families will have them.
It's all under the Student and Parent tab on the Grotton Public School website.
Yep. So if you look under Student and Parent, you see in the red highlighted Attendance Matters. And that's where you go to.
And there we go. Okay. So is it true that the reason why we're talking about this is that it kind of leads into your next sort of agenda topic, which is the alliance?
It does.
Because
Thank you for that segue.
Here, every once in a while, I can do it. Because in order, one of the, one of the I'm slowing down.
We, we have. It matters.
It matters because
The alliance wants us to.
Because our attendance, that's right, because we got paid. Thank you. Lee and I can finish each other's sentences. So it is that it's not just the scores that our students have in terms of academics and the, and the data collection, that's actually also the attendance. And my understanding is that that's going to become our new push. Not our new push, because it's always been a push, but we really are organizing around that.
Right. So we actually, as an alliance district, really, we are able to gain certain supports from the Connecticut from the Connecticut State Department of Education. We get supports financially that helps support us. We get all kinds of workshops free of charge and our whole data team really goes several times a year to, um, and works with the performance offer, office at the state of Connecticut. Our alliance grant has come in this year for $200,000 and next year for $200,000. And the parameters that they use are in an acronym called TACO. So T for taco is talent. So looking at our staff and making sure we have a diverse staff is really important in an alliance district. We really want our teachers and administrators to mirror our school communities. With the Grattan twenty twenty, our schools are beautifully diverse, really almost perfectly diverse. We have still a little room to grow with the elementaries, hence the lottery and the intra-district magnet. But we really want our, you know, paraprofessionals, uh, you know, all of those people who are working with our children to mirror the community like our kids do. So that's something that I know, um, loose, that Lori Lapine has worked so hard on in HR and our teams have worked to, um, create a process. So, the A is for academics, so there's all kinds of academic supports in that. Someone had mentioned tutoring last time and there are, through all of our, our besters and esters and alliance, we do have support for, um, our students with after school, during school, with the SRBI process, so that we have intervention happening beyond the core curriculum. So whether we have them in school or before and after school, we're really trying to give all, um, the kids what they need. Um, and then with the C, that's culture and climate in our buildings, we want all kids to feel like they belong, all teachers and staff to feel like they belong. And so that's, um, you know, a real, um, support. We have community coordinators. Um, we have social workers who help support and, um, I think we put a couple of things in culture and climate to address attendance. We've actually looked at it across the TACO to make sure that we're looking at attendance from different venues and supporting it. And then O is for operations and, um, you know, certainly in the operation side, um, we also, um, you know, are really cognizant of the things that are needed for kids. I would say that this last visit, when the state department of education comes and visits you, you know, you're kind of ready to share some good news and other news that you want to know so that you can watch. So as an alliance district, we have a monitoring tracking sheet that we do month to month. And at first, it looked like the first couple of months were up to twenty-seven percent absenteeism. So we, we brought the team together and we looked more closely to see what's really going on. And we put out the charge for the, the schools to actually look and dig in. Now, twenty-seven percent could be two days, three days each month that a student is absent. So doesn't sound much when you say, you know, two or three days, but it all does add up by the end of the year. So we really want to make sure that our kids are there when they can be. And, um, you know, and are excused in their absence. So I had sent you, uh, the Board of Ed, uh, one sheet that really described the talent, academic, climate and operation goals that we had. And so you did receive that in your board pack, but it has everything from professional learning, recruiting human capital and, um, diversifying our staff, um, to looking at our leadership and, um, under academics, ongoing review of SRBI processes across the district, making sure that we're having intervention during the school day and before and after school. And then the family engagement and having wraparound services, hence the social worker who can help out, hence community coordinators, so that we're really reaching out to our families um, and, and identifying what struggles there are so that we can help support children during the school day. And then under operations was really some technology that we're looking at. And, um, you know, we've been meeting about the technology plan. We're going to come back and bring back some ideas adjusted slightly to finance and facility and let the board know ultimately what we think in the next couple of years, two, three years would be a good plan. And some of that is supported by BOD supplement funds. Some is supported by our bester funds and some are supported by alliance funds. So that's kind of the quick overview of being an alliance district. And I certainly appro- appreciate the networking that I get to deal with the, with the superintendents and the support I get from the state of Connecticut. So.
Take questions from the board or from Isaiah?
I, I didn't ca- I didn't catch when the, um, visit was going to be from the state.
We just had it this past week.
So it's all done and they don't come back again?
Oh, no, no, they come back.
I mean, how often?
Um, usually three times a year total, but they're actually coming back because we have the Blues and Beyond presentation of the seventh grade. And Iris White and Greg Drecko are coming back just to see the presentation and they want to go and visit the schools. So we're really excited to have that level of support, that they would take time to come down from Hartford to see students, um, you know, engaged in their learning.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right, we're going to move on.
That's you. Yeah, I guess that's me. Um, the next agenda item was brought up a few weeks back, I think, in regards to our school council positions within the district. Um, information was provided to the board back on October twenty ninth. Um, in your board notes, uh, which were compiled by, uh, Erin McGuire, who's the director of school counseling, and included a detailed outline of the daily and monthly tasks of our school counselors, uh, with a brief description of what those tasks are, how much they entail and the hours um, involved in that. Um, if you don't have, if you don't have, I did bring extra copies if, uh, if you needed them. Um, okay, if you could pass it down. Included in your packet for tonight, uh, was actually a great little quick synopsis of the changing face of counseling over the last five to ten years. The sheet's entitled Guidance Counselor Versus School Counselor. It kind of takes you through the evolution of the position. Um, of course, this is not in any way to slight what the counselors have been doing for the past, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years. Um, and I say that, um, not just because I'm married to a school counselor, but because I do believe that. Um, but, um, it's really to highlight how the, how the modern school counselors have really changed and all the stuff that they're doing. Um, it's really moved, as you can see on that sheet, it talks about moving from reactive services um, to just a, to just a portion of the student body. Uh, sometimes we're working in isolation with the results primarily measured by, um, feelings and perceptions to the current position that's really proactive, it's data-driven. Counselors are working side by side with school administration towards school improvement. Um, also included on the sheet that I, that I just passed around, I, I also asked, um, Mrs. McGuire to include the number of students who currently have IEP and five oh four individualized plans. Uh, though, as you may or may not know, those are students who often require additional, uh, time along with the day-to-day um, in the form of team meetings, PPTs, five oh fours to discuss goals, accommodations and, uh, data. Um, so, I mean, really looking at the breakdown, something like that, it, it's sort of like when you sit down to, to put your resume together, where you really don't realize all you do, um, until you sit down and try to account for it on paper. Uh, so the breakdowns really attribute to the great work that our counselors are doing, um, especially in light of the pandemic and the increase in all the social emotional support and needs of our, of our students coming back to school after being home birthed for so long. Um, I did invite Erin McGuire to, to attend tonight's meeting and I do see her on, uh, virtually, uh, joining us in the Zoom. Uh, if there's any questions regarding, uh, the information that's provided. Um, I'm hoping everything's clear, but if you do have questions, uh, please don't hesitate.
Hey, can we make sure that these get, um, uh, emailed out to Jay and Rita? I don't think that they, um.
Okay, absolutely. And I did check, they did go out on October twenty ninth with the board notes. So if you, if you, I definitely will send them out again, but if you check back in your email, you might be able to find them as well.
Thank you. Rita. You're muted.
Yep, I know. For some reason, I have all the board notes, but not October twenty ninth. So I, I'm thankful that you, um, said that you could send that to us. So I don't have any questions for Erin at this time, since I don't have it in front of me. But thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Phil.
I'll send them out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Erin, is there anything that you would, um, like to add to this discussion? And it's good to see you.
Hi there. Nice to see everybody as well. I just, I think it's important that, um, we just spend some time really talking about the, the role of the school counselor, because they do so much during the day um, in so many different ways. And I think that it's a position that people don't truly understand, um, all their responsibilities. Um, and hopefully that, that chart can kind of illuminate some of their, um, daily tasks and their important daily tasks. Um, and certainly this year, students are struggling to get back into the swing of things and their role is even more critical. And so, um, you know, their, their caseloads are, um, in the, I believe it's one seventy-seven per counselor. And that is a few under, you know, the recommended for the state. However, um, if, if anyone spends some time in the school counseling suite, understand that, um, a hundred and seventy-seven students per counselor is quite a few, um, with all the, the things that that go along with helping students, um, in a productive way. So I just hope that everyone takes the time to kind of review it. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to come back and explain. But, uh, the school counselors are certainly a hidden asset, uh, in schools.
Thank you, Erin. Liz? Erin, how many counselors are currently at the high school and how many are at the middle school?
There are six at the high school level and there are six at the middle school level. And that, and then at the high school level, uh, Jen Allenak is part-time and she is working specifically with, um, career and college and helping families and then organizing college visits and military visits as well.
She's on the scholarship.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Erin. This was, um, part of our, sort of our, um, walk up to or build up to, um, our budget conversations. And so we really wanted to, you know, kind of hear about what, to remind us and to also learn about all the things that, um, the school counselors do. So thank you.
Any other questions? Clearly we'll be having this discussion, not necessarily again, but we'll be talking about them as we go into our budget, our budget time. All right. And so, Phil, I think that that was what we had on yours. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And so, um, we're moving on to the business manager's report. And Lori, no, no, that would be Ken.
But I am.
But it's Lori. See, I knew that. Lori, you have a new title. Into that, because you, you forgot where your tie. All the tie is fall.
All right.
So you want to touch on minimum wage proposal?
Yeah.
Yes. So I think everybody has seen the minimum wage proposal that we've had. Refer to, I think, refer to the Board of Ed meeting today for action. Um, there have been no changes to the proposal as presented and, um, it is on the agenda for a vote later on in the agenda. Um, so I guess just we would take any questions at this point, if anybody has any additional questions regarding the proposal.
And you did reach out to the, the union about, um, you know, the possibility.
I did, I did. I met with them. Um, they are, um, supportive and agreeable with meeting with the board about the matter. So, um, I would recommend that if the proposal is approved, it's also approved that if we would enter into negotiations with the paraprofessionals as well.
And just to clarify, Lori, this is to take effect.
January one, right?
That's correct. January first effective date, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two.
And Ken had mentioned that with some of the cost avoidances this year in positions we haven't been able to fill, that we really foresee that the amount of money, I think, was a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we do have in the budget to provide this. And we have to make sure we have it in the future.
Yes, yeah, we'll talk about that in a second.
Yeah.
So Lori, just want to make sure that I am, um, understanding the comment.
Sure.
Um, so just for people who, um, are listening to this conversation for the first time. This was on our last week's agenda. Um, it was brought to us by, by our human resources director, Lori Lapine, um, about the fact that it's been very difficult for us to make, um, to, to hire and also to retain staff.
That's correct.
Um, because, and one of the, um, main reasons is, is that our salary rate for, um, the paraprofessionals is a lot lower than what's around us. Um, and so your proposal was for this, um, for the, the district to look at it, um, moving to a more minimum wage and also higher level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and that when you talk about going into negotiations with, um, the, um, the, um, union, are you talking about before the January first, um, twenty twenty-two?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is just a, this, our vote tonight is on, just on the proposal, but it would have to get finalized through, um, the union. Is that how you're seeing that?
So the, the vote tonight would finalize all of the non-union rates on the schedule.
Okay.
And it would agree to enter into negotiations specifically with the paraprofessional group. So that is one group on the schedule. But we would vote to finalize all the remaining job classifications that do not require collective bargaining action in tonight's vote.
So maybe that would mean that we should have two votes, right? One for the non, um, the non-union.
Um, right.
And then have another vote for us to, for the board to enter into negotiations. That would be my, I think that would be my preference, but.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have questions about, um, the table that is, um, being presented?
Kim, does that mean that we have to amend the motion?
Yeah. Yes, I mean, yeah, when we get to it, we can amend it. Yeah.
I was just curious. And, and will we be negotiating with the custodians as well? As secretaries?
We will not, because, uh, we just completed a contract negotiation and they are not, um, their pay rate is not in the group that we're trying to adjust here. They make.
Yeah.
The sub-custodians aren't part of the bargaining unit. Rita, was your question about the sub-custodians or the custodian maintenance?
Custodian maintenance, I know we just finished, but I just saw that their hourly rate for next time, starting January first, would be different. Is that not the case?
That's what you're looking at on the schedule, Rita, is some substitute custodian. So they're fill-in. They're not part of the bargaining unit.
Okay, I meant the little, the part below, union hourly.
Yeah.
So I, I just don't understand why we're only bargaining with the pairs. I know we're adding, because we're adding in another level.
Yeah. So we're only bargaining with the pairs because their rate of pay is not competitive to the marketplace. The other groups, their rates are competitive, so we're not suggesting to, uh, bargain with those groups at this time.
And we're actually increasing their entry level.
Yes, yes. I realize that.
But, um, I know that Learn, I think they, they did a little different take on their paraprofessionals.
They're actually going to have four different, uh, tiers, depending on the jobs being done. So, I mean, we're doing two, but I've just, you know, it's just something to think about if we ever wanted one in between, depending on the duties.
Help, someone needs to adjust the panel.
Sorry, we have to, um, touch the panel. Sorry, we have to touch the panel.
Wake it up. Justus.
So you couldn't hear me, Kim?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Yes.
So, so you're, what is your concern, Rita?
Um, whether or not we need another paraprofessional rate in between the entry level and this new registered behavioral technician proposal.
I think that's something we'd want to talk about in negotiations.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Rita.
So glad that you clarified what you were asking. Thank you.
Lee? But the, the paraprofessional entry rate is not going to 15?
It needs to be negotiated. So we will, correct.
Yeah.
We will negotiate. We have some thoughts on, on a proposal to share with them. We just have to wait until the board engages in the negotiation with them.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. Questions? Dean, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. All right. So I think you're on.
All right, moving on. You. I'm going to share.
Erin wrote something up there, if anybody's.
She says, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Good to see you tonight.
You as well.
All right, let's see. We, oh, that, the box is.
Um, you can minimize that box, right? Yeah. Mark, can minimize it?
So I guess I'm reading a little bit slower.
When I minimize it, it only affects my screen. You have to do it there on your screen.
Let me see. I think we're good, Mark. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, that's great.
There we go. So this is, this is a preliminary review of where the FY 23 budget could land. We took a quick look at this last week. And we wanted to just review it again this week. You'll see at the top, we have the current year budget, 77 million, 438,090. I have two columns here. The first column being all the changes that we are going to propose. And the second column is what, if, when a few of these proposals are going to be funded by, by grants. So those are highlighted in yellow. And I'll, I'll just go through these quickly. But the majority of the, of the increase is coming from salaries, as has in the past. Administration, administrators is based on their current contract, a 2.1% increase for FY 23, which equates to about 76,000. We are going to propose, as Susan spoke about last week, adding another assistant principal at the elementary schools to help with the workload there and to even out all, all, all the work and the students that need additional help at those schools. The teacher's contract has an increase of 3.1% next year, which equates to 1,063,000. We do have, we're hoping we're going to get six retirements. I think, I think we're coming up to that number, hopefully. There are a couple of additional adds. These are in yellow here. A BCBA, a pre-K, a social worker, a special education teacher. These are going to be funded by a couple of different grants that we received. Our IDEA, IDEA and then the IDA recovery grant. And these will be funded through FY 23. And then there are two and a half teachers that we had funded on the MSAP grant that we, we intend to fund through the ARPASR grant for FY 23 and 24.
So, um, Ken, ARP is?
Oh, I'm sorry. ARP is American Rescue Plan.
And IDEA?
Is, I don't know exactly.
The individual developmental education act.
It is for special education.
Right. Um, and what is the MSAP?
It's the middle school assistance.
Magnet School Assistance Program. National, right.
Sorry for the accents.
That's right.
And ASR is elementary and secondary.
Secondary.
School emergency relief. And then the paraprofessionals, we, we have, there is a 2%. They don't have a current contract, but there is a 2% built into the, that we're going to build into the budget to, in case there's increases there, as well as tutors. The school clerical and the custodians, they do have a 2% in their, in their actual contract. So that's built in here. There is a proposal to add another, a second, or another elementary school secretary to the two bigger, new elementary schools. There is the non-union CO as well as non-union other. We put a placeholder of 2%. And then the minimum wage impact, which is what that schedule we're looking at, this is going to be the full year impact, 253,000. So the full year impact of, of that, the deep block of that. And so total for, for salaries is a, a little over 2.1 million for grants, but after grants, it's, it's still a very large number of 1.7 million. There's a couple of other things that we took into account. 5% increase on health insurance, which we haven't met with our agent yet, but I've been told that this is the relatively good percentage to, to estimate on at this point. Social Security and Medicare, based upon the increases above. And then increases in our contract with STA and curtain. And just a really rough estimate on an increase on some out of district tuitions. And, and, and an increase to the site budgets, we, we take that 2%. And just, just a note there on the inflation rate, which is currently around 4.6% as of report. So as you can see, you know, these, these increases aren't really getting there, but just information. And so what this works out to be is in the second column, it would be a 3% increase to, to the budget preliminarily, based upon these very rough estimates.
And I was reminding Ken that I remember sitting in the seat last year when Dr. Graner was here. And that was the first number that we were remembering, the 3.1 on the teacher's side, the 3%. If any of you all remember that too, when we first launched what the outlook could be.
Yeah.
So it's very similar.
Yeah.
Mark, can we have the screen of our, our folks back? Thank you. Do you have questions from the board about this? Once again, oh, sorry, Lee. Once again, this is just about getting us prepared.
The three, the four in yellow?
Yes.
Those are grant, those are grant. So if, if those are new people, will they understand that it could be a one- or two-year grant? We may not be able to sustain that?
Yes, and we probably will look for cost efficiencies too, especially now that we have a campus with both middle school and high school sitting together. We might be able to have more opportunities for sharing stuff.
Any other questions? Rita, Jay, Rosemary? Those present? All right, hearing none, I'm going to move us on. So the next is the Director of Buildings and Grounds.
That's close enough.
Close enough. And he's off camera too.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to give you a, a couple of brief items that I'm going to talk about. Then I'm going to introduce my friend that I came, that came along with me tonight to, to address some other items. So the thing that I'm going to talk about is the clearing out of the schools that we've closed. In particular, Claude Chester and SB Butler, which will not be opened again. And last week, we entertained the principals as they came through those two schools to pick out any more items that are left over from those schools to see if they could use them at their schools, meaning bookcases and all those types of things that some people tried to order. But Ken said, maybe we should look and see if there's anything left. So the principals came last week. Today, we opened up from nine to noon at Claude Chester School. And the town departments came today through Claude Chester School. And we will have the town departments come through SB Butler tomorrow to see if there are any items that they're interested in, mostly file cabinets, office chairs, things like that is what they picked out. So those will be happening over the next two days. Once the town has been through tomorrow, then Tom Beebe, who is with Arcadis, will be taking photographs of the items that are left in the classrooms and putting it on this, on the town auction site through the, the town, through the finance department. And then for, I think that goes on the auction site for about two weeks. And anything that is left over after that, not, that, that does not sell, will then be disposed of in the final cleanup. So hopefully within, I would say, within the month, we should be done with those items that are left in those two schools and we'll be able to move on to turning those over. And so second, we have a report on our, on our new buildings. Rick will share with us. Rick Norris is here with us. He's off camera too. I, I stayed with him because he's a little bit shy. Rick will talk about the new schools and also he wants to speak about the solar panels.
So, so just to bring up to speed on, on the new schools, we do have a final cost, plus or minus like $6,000 or $7,000 for the middle schools. 81,056 or $30,056 out of an 86 million budget. So we save 5 million, just over 5 million on the budget. So the town doesn't have to necessarily bond that amount unless something else happens. Also, if you recall, some of you may recall, there was a $4 million ad in, in the budget for the purchase of property, which the state removed at the very beginning from the project. So the original budget, if you will, would have been 90 million, $90,000. So we're also saving like 375 or 3.75 million out of that right now, but there will be some additional bonding costs that will come out of those funds. So that, so that's really good news. We're getting ready to submit the final documents to the state. We'll be able to provide you, the board, along with the permanent school building committee and our, and our council, some final numbers. I submitted them to the, to my department head to, to review. And he will review those and we'll go with finance and then be able to provide you a cost of notes. The elementary schools are still continuing. We had some delays, obviously with the materials, that sort of thing. Everything right now looks like it should be complete by the end of December, actually, end of December. Those may include some minor items. The big items are still vestibule, which had some ballistic doors and glass installed, if you will, that those had continued, continued to be delayed. And we're expecting those to arrive very shortly. And we have been able to work with the principals, for example, to shut down one entrance, to work on that entrance and then shut down the other entrance. But this is, this will be the main entrance. And we'll work with the principals to complete that. The tile work at West Side should complete after the Thanksgiving weekend. Wes Cutler, there's, their Cutler or Mystic River, they're still waiting for materials to arrive. So that would extend a little bit further in there. Those two schools currently, the estimates are $2 to $3 million under budget also. So, so the, the rough figure I have right now is town costs for all three projects would be about $79 million. The state, and this is all very confusing sometimes, but the state also holds 11% retention. So depending on, and that money will not be returned to the town until the audit's complete. So right now, they had, they're taking as long as two years or so to do the audit. So whether we have to buy notes or bond for that money, we're not quite sure, but that's about $18 million. So initially, we're looking at $97 to $100 million for our share. Ultimately, we'll get reimbursed about $100 million from the state. So, you know, it's kind of back and forth initially for now. We are nearing a point, and I can work with Sam, we will make a proposal. Probably we'd be able to come to you at your next meeting, many of the whole, to discuss the turnover of the buildings to the board of ed. I'll talk with Sam and he, he can talk to you, Susan, and we can figure out what we can do. We still have a little bit of work to do, but we did turn over the middle school, if you recall, with, with a few outstanding items that were kind of minor to continue working on. So we will, we would look at potentially till January is the latest for that. So maybe the January meeting, we can bring that up. But not had time to work with the permanent school building committee and make sure they agree that buildings are ready to go and we can turn those over to you. Um, solar, I'm here to talk about solar a little bit. We are expecting a power purchase agreement from the Green Bank for middle school, rotten middle school and Mystic River magnet in here within the next few days. I've sent Sam a copy of what they call their template for the power purchase agreement, which your attorney should, should get a look at. Once we do get those numbers, if possible, come to your committee of the whole or, and/or finance and facilities committee, probably end of December, and have them actually do a formal presentation on what it is. You can all understand what, what the actual implications are for that. Right now, we are having sort of a problem with the Mystic River area because the price of steel's gone up. So the, the numbers aren't quite gelling, if you will. So we may have to do a rooftop installation there where, where we're looking at a kind of a, not a carport really, but an awning installation over a part of the portion of the parking lot, which would have been interesting and could have had application all over the district and the town. So we're, we're still working on that part of it. Once the timing that the Green Banks looking at is potentially approval of the PPA by the end of January. So this information becomes available. We'll provide that. And if we have to come to one or at least one, but if we have need to come to one or more than one, many of the whole, we certainly do that and have those discussions. That's where the two schools that are in the EverSource area. The one school that's in the utilities area, I was, I was tasked to ask, and I know it was different, there's kind of different thoughts earlier on, that neither the board of ed nor the town wanted to own the panels. The question I was supposed to ask was, would the board of ed consider owning panels at Thames River? And if that were the case, we could potentially use some money from the project or the, the bond to purchase those panels. We do have a group that's working with us. One of, one of the fellows is Rob Clea. He was the previous director of DEEP. And, and his counterpart, who does the technology end of the business, who also is working with the Green Bank. But what we would do is, is look at a project, see what a project cost may be, what kind of project could fit there. We have less roof there because the chiller for the air conditioning system is on the roof. But that would be something that I ask you folks to think about. Of course, they'll need an answer tonight, so. And there may be grants available for that also over at West Side, but there are things, River, but it's a different kind of situation because it's a different utility and they don't have to comply with the pure regulations that the EverSource does, the state. different utility and they don't have to comply with the pure regulations that the ever source does, the state. So I, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, or provide additional information or whatever you think.
Just for your knowledge, we only have two meetings next month, December. So it's the sixth and the thirteenth. So I just wanted to that's as late as we're gonna go in, in December.
Oh, I looked at your schedule, so.
Yes, I have a question for Rick. And that is, and maybe I should know this, but I don't. The, the money that is unexpended, does it go back to the state?
There is no money that's unexpected. We have no money in hand right now, except the reimbursements we got from the state. This is bonding, the ability to bond for money. So the council sometimes has the same thought that we have money in hand. It's a bank account. It's not a bank account, it's the ability to bond. So anything we don't bond, for example, if we only bond what we need to pay for the schools, then that rest of the money never gets bonded and we never get taxed for it. So, so it's not really, I mean, a lot of people think it's, it's money in hand. It's not money in hand. It's money that we would have to go out and bond for twenty years for.
Okay, thank you. So when we say that we're out, we're under budget by a couple of million, what you're saying is, is that we then only have bounded up to that?
Yes, we've only spent that amount of money out of what the budget amount was.
But, but we have the potential of a opportunity to bond more money because we're under budget.
Correct.
Okay. I understood it.
But if we can avoid the debt, we will.
Yeah.
Right?
Right now, right now, I, I did ask the question, you know, it's like three point six million is a bill to our, to our budget.
Dean?
Yeah, Rick, yes, retention. Is there any possibility of negotiating or wasn't negotiating like a mid project?
No, no.
Okay.
Now, we get, we get, we've got reimbursements of about sixty-nine million right now. They, they withhold fifteen percent to to eleven. The number's supposed to be eleven percent actual retainage, but we've had those discussions, although CPR, we're only getting the budget on that, right? So so they're holding what they're holding and, and I mean, we're kind of stuck with that. It is a, it is a large chunk of money for towns. You know, in the previous project, it was a five percent retain rate. And why it was increased, I don't know. The town, we've already suffered because somebody else didn't do what they were supposed to do.
Yeah, that's actually what that, what that's about.
So.
Yeah, I was thinking about the early contractors, the original site contractors, the people that are virtually plowing around with all the there's, there's still waiting on there.
No, they, well, we only, we only held five percent from contract or from the prime contractor, if you want to call him that. Cool G, who's the construction manager. So, so he's held that. There's also a small piece that they hold for the CHRO, Human Resources Plan that they have to have. One thing that we were able to do, you know, people were concerned about local labor. We had a fence change we needed to make over at West Side or Thames River. So we were able to tell them to hire a local fence contractor, which was great. We used the same contractor at Mystic River to finish the enclosure around the place gate. So we did over also at Thames River. We needed to replace the sidewalks because they were pretty decadent condition along Brandykey Avenue. So they also had hired a local contractor to do that. So we're trying to take advantage of, of the local labor also, you know, and it bodes well for the community. You know, they do good work and they're very responsive.
Thank you.
The, the retainage was increased, I'm told by the OSCGR, by some of those people up there. Partly because towns were school departments were taking many, many years to apply, to get their change orders and they weren't following the regulations of that. So they, they increased the retainage and they also reduced the amount of time that it takes now that you have to get the change orders into the state. So I think people are following through and probably
Yeah, we have six months to get change orders.
When it does, when the money, money does come, when it's all over, it's going to come in one tranche or are they going to make?
Well, each project's a separate project. So they'll at least come separately.
Thank you. I got another, are you done with your question? Okay. So, Jay?
Yes. Hi, Rick. I just want to say thank you again. You have now overseen one of the largest, you know, school construction projects in the state. With the completion of this 2020 program and the fact that we're under budget. You know, is, is kind of a, a minor miracle, I, I would say, especially in this, in this economy. So thank you and also all the volunteers on the permanent school building committee who have shepherded this for so many years. Which is going to be such a valuable asset to our town. Having said that, and at the risk of sounding like a broken record, do we have any more information about the status of lights at the middle school and any other additions there? I know the town council had, had floated a number of ideas if there was any money left over. Is there any other discussion on that?
Stay okay into that.
Yeah, same way as the lights. There's only one thing that's been taken to the council, right?
Okay. Well, I know they had, they had discussed a number of things amongst themselves when that was brought.
I, I understand. They've only approved one. Also, really the minor, the minor miracle is having all the schools open when it's open. But notwithstanding, that's it. I'll let Sam talk about lights.
Yeah, regarding the lights, that's on us now, the Board of Ed, and we need to put out an RBRFQ, which I am investigating and researching presently and hope to have ready for review within a few weeks. So we'll be going through that very shortly. But thank, thank you, Jay, for mentioning and thanking Rick. I, I also don't very often get to thank Rick publicly, but Rick really has been a champion for the Groton Public Schools. He's, he's not only in charge of the money, responsible for the money and the project itself, but when every, every decision he makes, he thinks about the schools first and, and the operation of the schools and how it's, how it's going to affect the schools and the operation of the schools. And so I, I would like to also personally thank Rick for all that he's done for us.
He loves being complimented.
And for me, I really appreciate that. I mean, you folks have made it so easy to work with, to, to work with on these projects. Sam has been there, you know, all through, all throughout. The questions come as to what you really want to see, because you guys are ultimately the customer. I'm just the builder. I got plans. You approve the plans that build from the plans, but there are some things that we're moving along. That may be a little different. So we always make sure that, that, that Sam's cut in and, and I know he talks with Susan, but you guys being the end customer, that's, that's our job. Global quality management used to be the, the key phrase. That's still one thing that we do or I do because I'm your customer, you're my customer. So we try and work that out. We really appreciate the support throughout the project.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think I'm going to need a lot more information about the, the buying and owning solar panels and what does that look like? And so um, and we always, let me own my stuff. Um, I find it much helpful if I have the information before, before the meeting so that I can look at it. But you're talking, you're going to be talking to someone who knows absolutely nothing to remember the audience.
Right. We'll, we'll provide a presentation. We'll provide that presentation ahead of time. I'll have the experts come and speak about it so they can speak about one fellow can speak about the Green Bank, which is really pretty easy. Or we can bring the Green Bank people in, but we could also bring the other group to talk about.
Yeah, I, I also, I also think that we need to have the information about what does that mean financially to us about if we own the solar panels, like, and what is that? What does that all mean? So that we can go into, yeah, so we can go into that. So, but there's no further questions from the board. I'm going to move us along.
Kim, I have a question.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I had two questions for Rick and maybe Sam. One is, I was wondering if the new ovens have been installed at the, at the new schools. They needed to be. I guess there was an issue or repaired the ovens?
Well, there is, there is an issue at West Thames River. The oven is seems to be working satisfactory. Doesn't seem to be an issue there at all, for whatever reason. The one at Mystic River, it looked like there was a gas issue to start with or a pressure, gas pressure issue. Right now that's been resolved somewhat. One of the ovens is working satisfactory. The lower one, the upper one had a, had an interlock switch or whatever that's indicating the door's not quite closed or wasn't quite closed. So it didn't allow it to operate. So we're working through that. I still have still trying to get those replaced. If this repair doesn't work, then they got to get it in. So what's happening is, it's like a twelve week lead time. So we're trying to provide something that works and if it doesn't, that we had, it works now. So, so kids can get the hot food, medicine has to be shipped into the school, but also look at the long term of how those things are performing.
Okay. And my second question was, Rick, I know that, that, that it's very warm, very hot on the playgrounds at the schools because there's no, no awnings were built in. So if you were ever thinking about putting an awning rather than over a parking lot, maybe over the playgrounds, so the children could have some shade. If you were ever thinking of solar panels. It was just a suggestion and we can ask that when we have our presentation.
Oh, yeah, that, that is an interesting concept. Probably not the two Green Bank projects initially, but I think what the goal here is to get our foot in the door with the solar business, see how it operates and how comfortable the Board of Ed is with it and then try to expand the program outward.
Yeah. And I was very pleased that the state put in the charging stations at both eight of them at the Groton Middle School and four at each of the new elementary schools.
Yes, we did that. We made the change at the middle school. There's only four calls for us, so put eight in.
All right. I'm gonna, Jay, did you have another question?
Sorry about that. So what I, what I think I hear Rick saying is that even though the town council has discussed these additional items at the middle school that we would need to actually formally go back and ask about it. I think what was holding them up was the final accounting. So I'll just put that as a bug in, in our ear because I'm, I'm told that the definitely the bleacher situation up there, you know, could could use some work.
All right. Thank, thank you, Jay.
I have a very small question. I heard, Sam, I heard Rick mentioned place gate. And the last time I went by a project there was a place gate there. And I'm wondering if, if there are any others around and what's going to happen.
I, I moved that place gate once already. So unless the chairman of the board tells me to move it again, I don't have any plans to move it again. It would go back to the town at this point. The, the new schools have fantastic place gates. So I don't think we'd have any use for it anywhere else.
Any other questions? Hearing on Rick, thank you for joining us. So we're going to be moving on to Paul, uh, committee reports and policy, Lee?
Policy, we met on Monday. We today, we're going to be talking
Curriculum.
On the eighteenth and we talked about accepting school, the state issued curriculum and not just accepting it as it is and not doing any other work with it. And the other thing we talked about were the implications of midterms and finals on the counting out of curriculum.
Finance and facilities, Jay?
Yes, we met on November first. We discussed the minimum wage proposal that we're going to be voting on tonight. That also was, as Kim mentioned, thoroughly discussed a week ago tonight. For anyone that wants to go back and review those, can you do the whole minutes? We also went over the end user device proposal that we discussed at last week's COW. And we got an update from Ernie Koschmeter about the food service finances and preparing for the discontinuation of no, the potential discontinuation of no cost meals for students in 2022. And that was it. We ran out of time.
Yeah, thank you. Um, negotiations, well, we've just signed off as a board on our last two negotiated items, which was the custodians and secretaries and teachers. So we've done that. And it looks like we might be going back into negotiations, but I actually kind of would like to think about that as a board movement, that the whole board serves as a negotiation team to meet this need. Um, Lauren, that would be you, Rita.
Yes, we learned the meeting last week, we had a presentation from the Guilford Superintendent, Dr. Paul Freeman. He presented on Guilford Public Schools Equity and Social Justice Initiative. And about the confusion and misconceptions regarding critical race theory and that how it is not being taught in local districts, but it because, because it has become very politicized and also a very emotional topic. So he shared his district's outreach journey, you know, consisting of parents, teachers, student focus groups, equity professionals and so forth. So that was very interesting. The New London Planning and Zoning Committee did not approve the Ocean Avenue Learning Center's request to have a hundred students in the, for the addition, but only eighty-five. So that's unfortunately only twenty-five more, more slots for students, which is, you know, that was going to be more, students would be able to attend that school. There's a long waiting list, but they felt that there maybe were some parking issues. So rather than a hundred, that was requested, it'll only be eighty-five for the next couple of years. And let's see, oh yes, the teacher residency program, TRP, which is the alternative route to elementary certification. That embraces a different approach to attract and retain teachers of color in Connecticut, has forty-five residents this year and next year. So I'm sure some of them are from our town, right, Susan?
That's right. We have four.
Great.
Great.
Great. So that's wonderful. So that, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. The town council, the RTM, the Board of Ed, liaison. We need to put Gotten City Town Council on, okay, Gotten City Council should be on this. Is it? Okay. All right. Um, so that has not met, they did not meet last month. Um, just because it was just right around the election time period. And I guess it's scheduled for this coming Wednesday.
Yeah, I think it is at the same time as the other task force in the community.
Okay.
So I think a time, a different time may work.
So I just want to make a note.
So it, it is meeting next Wednesday.
Um, I, I don't know where the, that group stands, Lee, um, but
When am I done?
Well, the, the newborn gets sworn in on the thirteenth. Your turn ends the second.
I would be willing to be the liaison.
Thank you. Thank you.
And as for the Rotten Scholarship, which is next?
Sure.
I have none of those two on Wednesday. And I have to find someone for January.
Yes, thank you. Um, the AGSA, DEA and Board of Ed liaison, we were not able to secure a date for this coming month. And so I think that we've pushed this up
After the holidays.
After the holidays. After the holidays. We've heard from the Gotten Scholarship and Athletic Fields. Jay, is there any new information?
No, they have not been meeting. Everything's basically on hold until the new council decides on a, on what they want to do with the Claude Chester site.
All right, thank you. And then the State Council for Military Children?
Will meet in April.
Will meet, meet in April. I'm still gonna keep that on there. It may be we can make, is it, is it a by year? Does it need twice a year?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe, Joe, we can even put that on present processes, that the State Council of Education Opportunities for Military Children, and just like twice a year, so that we keep it on there, but people realize that we're not, we don't respond to it because it's only twice a year. All right, I'm now moving on to the action items, which is the consent agenda, which all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed. I will accept a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I have two things. Under, Dr. Ackerman noted, the second one says that she reviewed the scholars at the GPS Hall of Fame, but I reviewed the, the inductees, not the scholars. And the other thing is Jamal Davis's name is misspelled on the, on the. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll give you my notes.
Okay. Any other?
I have one. Page two, underneath Committee Reports E, Learn. It was, it says the Executive Learn Board met. That, that is, it's just the Learn Board meets the second Thursday of the month, and the executive is on the fourth. So this one, executive should be crossed out. That was the regular Learn Board. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. The Board of Ed would like to say thank you to the West Side Junior High Middle School Reunion Committee, which has donated $920 to the Gotten Middle School Student Council. So we'd like to say thank you for that. The next on the agenda, Lee, would you be willing to read the motion for number one?
I would love to do that. The motion is to approve policy P 5141 dot three, health assessments and immunizations as a second reading.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Discussion?
I don't think that there are any changes to that.
No.
This is the second reason, nothing else.
Hearing no discussion, I'm gonna take it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve policy P 5141 dash three, health assessment and immunization as a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Votes? We have one opposed?
I was opposed last time, so.
Abstain?
Sorry.
Keep it consistent. That motion has carried. Thank you. Dean, would you be willing to read under new business, the motion for number one, please?
Motion to approve policy P 4118 point 239 COVID-19 vaccinations as a first reading.
Can I have a second, please? I got Rosemary. Discussion, please.
Well, this policy is really for staff, you know, hence the 4,000, and it really has come out of, you know, protecting staff and students with the COVID-19 mitigating situation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Lori, because she's been instrumental in, you know, taking care of faculty and staff.
And so, so this policy was recommended, if I recall, recommended by Kate. And all its intention and what it is attempting to do, I don't know, can they hear me okay? So the intention is to just clarify the COVID vaccination requirements of the staff, and this policy is essentially the exact duplication of the executive order. So all it does is takes the executive order, formalize it into board policy, and it follows the order exactly. Now, just add one last thing. It will only remain in effect as long as the executive order exists. It will automatically sunset when it is no longer required.
And we've actually already implemented this with executive order. I know Lori did an outstanding job communicating to staff what the requirement was, and, you know, and making sure that we were following through. So anybody who had opted out of the vaccination at a certain time period, not the new hires, but the ones who were existing, do have to tap on a regular basis.
Weekly.
Yeah.
Dean?
Well, my first question was going to be whether or not this tracks the executive order 13D and the others, and you've answered that question, Lori. Thank you. Shocker, I'm not gonna be voting in favor of this. I take, I take issue. I know, I know, Lee, I know. I'm really taking issue. Well, one thing, just sort of, you know, housekeeping, which is, I'm not crazy, even though this sunsets. I'm not crazy about.
Crazy.
Yeah. I'm not.
So Dean has the floor.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, that's okay. I can take it. But I just wanna give more, more time for feedback here. So I'm not crazy about policies that track existing law, whether it's statutory, regulatory, and executive order, or anything like that. Again, not with saying that this thing sunsets. If the, if the governor wants to order whatever through an executive order, that's the governor's business. I won't be party to that. I think it's something that we don't, that's needless. The executive order is very clear what it's, what it says, but I'm not gonna take part in that. Second, I, I have an issue with the fact that the executive order does not take into account people who have acquired immunity by having had COVID. My eldest son is an example of that. Okay, he is never going to be, as far as he, you know, as he can help, it never is gonna be vaccinated. He's had COVID. So scientifically, he should have at least as good protection as I do. It's not perfect. I've had my shots. He hasn't. So anyway, so there's that. Also, I note that in the executive order, policy parrots it, which is, there's testing allowed, but only if you were a hire or existing, existing hire from before September 27th, 21. Anybody hired after September 27th, 2021 doesn't have the option of testing. So the only way you can get out is through a very limited religious exemption, which isn't even gonna be in place anymore. And if a doctor says, well, you're gonna be, you know, this is contraindicated for very narrow purposes. I don't think that the contraindication would include the person's had COVID. I would like to have seen something like that. I'm not certain. I'm not a doctor, but I would like to have seen something very explicit that says, if a doctor says that my patient does not need vaccination because they have achieved immunity, as far as I can tell, by having had COVID, I was there for it. That's my, that's my take as a doctor. They don't need vaccination. That's not provided for. So I think this is, this is, it's, it's more than, more than what we need. Again, it's not a, not an objection of this particular policy. It's just a parrot of the EO. I'm not gonna have any part of it. So that's, that's long and short of it. That's my note.
Thank you, Dean. Liz?
I was just wondering why we have to have policy if there's a law, if there's an executive order which has the force of law? Why we have to have a policy that, that mirrors that? What is it? Why do we need to do that?
We don't, we have a lot of policies that.
Do we?
Because the state and the Fed requires us to.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't know that.
Many, many, many.
Okay, and I.
I think the regulations are important, too. Like, how do you implement this kind of thing? This took a lot of work in how to implement this in the district. And so that was helpful as well to get, you know, regulations and guidance on that.
Okay, I just, I did not understand, and I wanted to clarify because I did not realize that this, because if it is a parroting, you know, it is, it's coming right, it's, it's just a taking the executive orders and just putting it into our lingo here, then, but if that's required by us by law, then by, by the governor or by our, our charge, then that's what we need to do, and I understand that. Also, I don't think, never mind, I'm not gonna make the other comment. Thank you very much.
I just wanna, at the bottom of all the policies, as you see, there are all those numbers of the Fed and the state and things like that.
Right.
Usually, what we do is because the state of the Fed's signature, and that's why we do it.
Okay.
We'd love it if we didn't have to do it.
Any other questions?
One.
Rita, so I'll do Rita and then Andrea.
Thank you. I just wanted to discuss the fact that when someone has COVID and you have some immunity, no one knows yet how long that immunity lasts, but if there was going to be, you know, an exemption for that, then I think what needed to be written into the law is that you need to have an antibody test to see whether or not, how much, you know, how protected you really are. And you know, it's, it's limited, that immunity, once you've had COVID. The same thing, I can see Rosemary nodding her head. It's the same with vaccinations, you know, it's not gonna be forever. So as an exemption, if somebody wanted to be exempt because they've had COVID-19 and were very sick with it, they, they would need, I think, then to have an antibody test to see how strong their immune system really is. That's just my comment on, on what Dean was saying about his son, so. I'm not a doctor, but I have done a lot of reading. Thank you.
I got Andrea and then Liz.
This is just for front three. Is, is the language consistent throughout Board of Ed and board? Very good. Okay, thank you.
So my question is, is, that was a good point, Rita, because my daughters had COVID twice. Okay.
Well.
But the thing is that if there's an antibody, if that, can we add that language into our policy?
No.
No.
Okay, I don't know. That's why I ask. Okay, I appreciate you asking, because if someone was just hearing it, they would be wondering why, why couldn't we just do that? But we were, um, I, I can't, no, I can't remember what I was gonna say. I am gonna recognize Lee, because she has not spoken yet, and then I'll go to the Dean.
Actually, I tested positive in April of 2020. The next month, I checked on my antibodies. They worked. I checked in three months, they were gone.
Okay, so I'm not gonna get into a conversation about the medical field, about what all the science is out there in terms of, of, of antibodies and such. Let's stick to the policy, please. Dean?
Yeah. Again, I was ready to set through the vaccines as well. As far as the requirement goes, I didn't read anything in the executive order that says boards of education shall adopt a policy. The executive order is operative on its own. It refers to state workers, or refers to school boards, et cetera. So at least as far as this policy is concerned, there's nothing in the governor's got to give order that requires us to adopt one. So, no. Again, you said, could, would we be allowed to add or modify? No, not from my reading of the executive order. The executive order says this shall be the case. So anything that we do that says, well, we'll allow this, or we'll allow that, strays from the executive order, violates that. So.
Any other conversations?
I do have a question. I'm sorry. Where does it say? Where do we get the charge that we have to take this, a policy like this, and make it board policy? Where does that come from? Is that from the general statutes? Is that from the CDSC, the state, Connecticut State Department of Education? Where is that charge?
So it's a good, so let me make sure I hear your question.
Okay.
Is why are we taking it as an executive order, making it into a policy?
Right.
Okay, so is there, is there an answer to that?
We've had to do that actually throughout COVID, because we had things that changed due to our regular policies. So we had to make adjustments during this timeframe to make sure that we had taken the law and made it a school board policy. That's really kind of our charge. That's what a board does, is they have to look at the law. As a matter of fact, one of the workshops I went to at the Cape Caps was all the new legislation that's out there.
Yeah.
That needs to then be put into policy. So keeping up with that is a very gigantic job.
Okay, I just wanted to know if that's, I'm, I'm just wasn't sure of the process, the procedure. Okay, the governor comes down with these types of things. Okay, now, how do you implement, and that goes out to the down to the boards, out to like the council, town councils, or whatever, and this, and now you have to decide how you're going to implement.
Right.
Okay.
We have to clearly communicate that to all of our staff. Right.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor to approve the policy P 4118 dot 239 COVID-19 vaccination as a first reading. All those approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? So do you have that, Joe? Okay. So I have one abstention and one oppose, and the rest was there. Okay, I'm just making sure that I got that. All right, so that goes on to a second reading. Okay, because we just haven't had this one on our agenda enough. Last time, can I have Liz, would you be willing to read the motion for number two, please?
Motion reads to approve the preferred class size guidelines.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
Rita?
All right, I got Lee. Sorry, she got there before you did. And discussion. So once again, this is to, one, kind of helps set the parameters as when we begin to take a look at our budget in coming in January, and to make sure that we have the class sizes that make sense. And I guess when we, so yes, so here it is.
And I know that there have been some questions about our guidance counselors with that 200 to one ratio, and I, I guess I heard a discussion around the fact that she put down that the counselors, there are six of them, and it's about 177, right?
Right, that's what, yeah.
Okay.
Because of population.
Sam, could you tap the panel?
A little bit.
Okay.
Isaiah would beat me to it.
So any, so any questions or, questions or concerns about this class size and, and stuff?
I'm gonna be obnoxious. Go ahead, Liz. I just think 25 students is just, I, I would like to see it down to 23, 22, 23 max.
Where are you, my friend?
Physically, up at the high school, fourth grade, four through 12. I know in the high school, even the physical, looking at the physical plant, those classrooms are, when you have 25 students in there, they are wall to wall. It's very, very tight. So, and that's just speaking from the physical plant. You have, you cannot have rows. You must have desks that are, you have to organize your classroom. It's just a lot of bodies in that room. And I don't, I haven't been to the elementary schools. But I have been into the middle school, and I've been into the high school, and I do believe, I, I personally would like to see between twenty and, no more than twenty-two in a middle school, high school classroom. That's just me. Thank you, Liz.
Rita, did I see you raise?
Uh, um, I didn't, but I'll, I'll speak to that, because these are just preferred class sizes.
True.
And it, and I think if you averaged out the class sizes at Fitch, they'd be much, much lower than twenty-five. There are a few that are, I mean, when my son was in middle school, he had thirty in his algebra class. So, I mean, those are just, these are just preferred, I mean, we don't set the, you know, we don't do the scheduling.
I understand, I get. So that means that when, when we say preferred, that means that we're just saying that no more than twenty-five, or up to twenty-five. Preferred. Preferred.
But the contract says something different.
That's right. Oh, it says.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? I guess, sort of, Liz, to your point, I think that when we get into the budget, we're gonna see what the, what each of the schools has in terms of the numbers of bodies.
I just had to say it.
Alright.
Been there, done that.
I, I want, I want you to say it, so, all right. Um. Is there any more discussion about that? Awesome. All those in favor to approve the. Oh, Isaiah.
Oh, thank you.
Um. I really haven't, you know, but just to support what was I saying? During C T L, since the way we're doing it, the way we did in the past was, we've been combining two C T Ls for those fifty minutes. And depending on what room you're in, it does feel packed at times, and I don't know the exact number of kids in the room. But it's definitely. Either more around twenty-five during those fifty minutes. So I don't think it's the wisest decision to have that many people in C T L, but they're changing a little bit now.
I think they are gonna make it change.
Yeah.
Yeah. C T Ls are like the advisory or the, um, home room type of thing, if you didn't know what that was. Thank you. No, sorry, I didn't.
Something teaching and learning.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember what teaching, something says teaching and learning, right, though, I don't remember. I think that we need to have the right class size for the right learning experience.
Yeah.
Also, understanding, um, whether we would have space if we wanted to, um, do a lower ratio from student to teacher, and also wh- whether our budget could afford to add more teachers, um, to the budget, so that's. Um, I think that, that once again, it'll be interesting, once we get closer to looking at the budget, um, and see what each school has in terms of class sizes. I think that that's gonna be, um, useful. Once again, this is just the guideline, it's not a, this is not a must, it's preferred. Any further discussions? I'm not keeping, I'll keep in my mind. All right, all those in favor to approve, uh, the preferred class size guidelines, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
No.
Or nay?
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll say, that motion has carried. All right. Um.
Thank you.
So this is, um, to the question, I think, Rita, you gave, which is, are we going to have to change, um, the motion? Um, so I believe we need to have a motion to discuss the possible action regarding the minimum wage proposal that was presented to us tonight. And then also a motion to go enter into negotiation as a whole board, um, with the, um, paraprofessional union. Does that make sense, folks?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so, um. Liz, I think we can, we can keep to approve the minimum wage proposal, does that sound like that's an okay motion? Okay, so Liz, would you be willing to read that?
Certainly, to approve the minimum wage proposal.
Can I have a second on that? Is there any further discussion on that? Were you just saying second, or were you waiting?
I was second.
Okay, just wanna make sure that I understood. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, um, of the motion to approve the minimum wage proposal, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. All right. Dean, you don't have to look so sorrowful and down when you.
That's my look.
That's, that's your look? All right. All right. The other, um, motion, um, this, or the second part is, uh, a, a motion to approve, um, the total board um, going into negotiations with the paraprofessionals. Can I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Liz. Any discussion?
Yes, do you mean, is this gonna happen at the C O W on December sixth?
I, I think we're gonna, Susan and I are gonna have to look at the calendar and see where we can eke out some time to have a, um, negotiation meeting, and we would notify the board.
Oh, I thought we were gonna try to do it, um, with the present board.
Executive session, negotiations and non-meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We, no, we, we would have a non-meet, we would have a negotiation meeting, which is a non-meeting.
I, I was just, I was just asking if it was gonna be at our next time, at the next C O W.
Next Monday.
Which is, no, two.
Two?
Yeah. Um. I, Rita, I don't have the answer to that, Susan and I are gonna have to get to the calendar, and also, we have to extend a, um, uh, uh, hello to the union. That's not the word, but that's what came up.
An invitation?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor for the board to go into negotiations uh, with the paraprofessional union, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, that motion has carried. Isaiah, I'm just gonna look on for this, because. And I'm just too proud to say, could you just look at this and fix this for me? All right, I'm on the set, last, the next part of, um, our agenda, which is letter and communications and comments by board members on meetings, items, and other items in their jurisdiction. That would be Rosemary, what do you have?
Um, I have attended G A S and, um, uh, Sound Community Services Board meeting, since we have, since I've, since our last meeting.
Thank you, Rosemary. Rita?
Yes, I wanted to send out a large congratulations to the, all the fall sports teams at Fitch. There are numerous, um, teams from, starting with Unified Soccer, Volleyball, Football, Girls Swimming and Diving, Girls Soccer, Boys Soccer, Fall Cheerleading, and Girls and Boys Cross Country. I think everyone's done a phenomenal job this year, but I'd like to do a special call out to the Field Hockey Team, which won the E C C's, beat Stonington, which is quite a feat to do. And also to the Boys Soccer Team for reaching the finals for the first time ever, ever, at the States. And to send, I think all the other teams are finished, but to send good luck to the football team. And I had one other thing, at, while I was on the website, and there was something that I didn't know anything about, it's called the Seal of Bileiteracy. Um, I read about it, I listened to, you know, the speaker, and what it's about, I understand what it's about, but I didn't realize that we had that. And so I was wondering if sometime in the future, we could have a discussion about it.
I smell an agenda item.
Yep.
Seal, Seal of Bileiteracy. Which is, it's a, it's very interesting, and I, I just happened to be looking over the website and saw it, and didn't know what it was until I read about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jay?
Yes, so I just wanted to, uh, again, thank Lee, Rosemary, and Jane for their service. Um, I've, I, I've learned, uh, a lot from each of them. Um, and I appreciate their, their service, and I know that we haven't heard, uh, the last from them. And, and I have to say that earlier this evening, as we were going through what, um, some people, um, call Ed You Speak, I thought back about Mary Kelly, um, our late, great board member, and how she requested that we issue a glossary before each meeting. Um, so that we get the terms down. I used, I used offhandedly in a conversation today, I used C T L, and someone asked me, um, you know, what it was, and, uh, you know, I had to explain it, and they said, well, why isn't it just called Study Hall? So, uh, there is a lot of, you know, there, there is a lot of, um, a, a lot of abbreviations. The last thing is, I received an email today, uh, from the State Department of Ed in requi, in, in response to my question about why the Grattan Public Schools are not listed, uh, our students are not listed as eligible to uh, apply for the twenty thousand dollar Voice for Change Grant, um, which is part of the ARPESR program. And I was told that there was a website error, uh, and some districts, uh, did apply and weren't approved, so I sent that um, letter to Susan, hoping we can follow up, and maybe, um, you know, our students, uh, would be able to, uh, come up with an idea for that grant.
They actually, that was one of the workshops at the Cave Caps, and so I did make some contact, though we're working on it now. I forwarded some of the information to the administrators at the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Now we have high school in here.
Me. Uh, yes, um, we received, uh, board, I assume we all received, something about the baseball coach. Who was looking, pardon me?
Yeah.
Oh, um, and, and it had to do with the baseball coaches asking the baseball players to ask their friends and family for four hundred dollars each to what I call play to pay, pay to play. I, I wrote a note to all of the members of the board, saying that we should never, never be asking our students to ask for money, considering the fact that we have students who are in the forty percent who, whose parents do not have four hundred dollars, and neither do their parents. I think we should not be doing that under any circumstances.
So I can write about this in board notes, but it is not a pay for play, I think it's a goal that was set, and it might have been too extraordinary a goal, I agree, it was a lot. But just, instead of selling candy bars and other things, they do these fundraisers where kids will go out to family members and ask for donations. Or magazines, or whatever they're selling.
A magazine, or Girl's Got Cookies, or anything else, are fairly inexpensive. As parents, we all went to wherever we were and tried to sell cookies. Um, our kids didn't actually do it, we did it, but the idea of considering any amount that even comes close to four hundred dollars to students, and, you know, is, is impunctual.
So, just to, um, absolutely, Lee, if that was what it was, and so.
That's what it was.
Well, so the athletic director did respond to, to us about that, and so he did get some clarification about that. But it sounds to me that there's more work around that in terms of, is it the four hundred? But our understanding is that no one is gonna be denied playing if they don't raise the four hundred.
But the coach is gonna know who got the money.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we have a baseball player right here.
Um, yeah, I could speak more than that, if you guys want.
Sure.
So, we had a meeting for it last Friday in the small gym, and what was basically told to us was that we have this link to the website where we share with other people, and you get like emails and phone numbers from people that we know. And the goal is four hundred, but we're not asking anyone for specific amounts, we're just asking to donate whatever they can. And it's not like a pay to play thing, it's just, we're asking for mostly because of how hard we got hit, because two years ago, we didn't have a season, and weren't able to do fundraising. So they're really pushing, just trying to get as much as we can for our program this year.
Hmm.
I just don't have other sports teams, I feel like I was told that other sports teams have done it this way, but. I'm not sure.
So maybe in your board notes, can you?
I'll find out.
Can you also, um, have us go back, have, um, Susan do some, look into that, um, and see what that is about that? Isaiah, once again, told you, your voice is really important.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. Cause we're, we're not sitting in that, not knowing. Um, and can have some information right away. Dean?
I've said enough.
You've said enough? You never say enough.
All right, you want something, I'll give you something, okay? My daughter still takes a school bus, or tries to take a school bus, that hasn't been ironed out, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Good to know. Actually, that's important for us to know. Rita?
I actually got a thank you note from one parent today, and he was thanking the whole administration team about how things have smoothed out for lots of families, and his family in particular, so we continue to work on that to, to make sure that, you know, it is smooth sailing. So.
And Sam is just smiling.
No, I'm just smiling, I'm writing down a note.
Is that why my daughter's bus doesn't show up?
I wanna see what's going on with these daughter's bus.
All right.
Well, Dean, I have some news. I had a parent come to me and say thank you, because for the first time since the beginning of the year, Bus Twenty-Six finally did the route that was posted.
Oh, well, there you go.
Real.
Well, I threatened to ride that bus, and she didn't stand right for me, so.
All right, oh, that's pretty cool, and also, I just wanted to say, I had my first experience with Cade, um, conference was, was very good. Um, I was very intrigued by a lot of the stuff they were talking about with the Facebook, and I really. I, 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 I know that we are on, but I would like us to be very cautious, and I just, um, there were a number of us were there, and I just, I'm just a little concerned, um, about us becoming, to, how that Facebook page is gonna be set up. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Andrea?
I have four things. The first thing is, is the guidance counselor versus the, uh, school counselor, and I just wanted to say that the guidance counselor by any other name would smell a sweet, so I would, I'd just like to take that stand. Uh, the second thing is, I also went to Cave, and I was delighted to see Susan and, and Dr. Graner uh, as a team again, speaking about Without Words, that was really wonderful. Well, the third thing is, Juliet Parker put me in touch with, um, with Bobby Willard, who was a student at Fitch Junior High School, and he came, he was here in town, uh, doing something at the naval base, and he, um, he came over and visited for about a half an hour, and I just wanted to talk about how Grattan, uh, students stay connected with our system throughout their life, it's a wonderful thing. Finally, yesterday, uh, in lieu of, because we didn't have a Martin Luther King dinner this year, Mystic Seaport welcomed the scholars and their parents for a, a, a reception afternoon, and it was just wonderful. That's a wonderful.
Oh, that is. Oh, very cool. Um, for those of us who went to Cave, um, be prepared that probably one of the, maybe the whole meetings, um, to give a short synopsis of the workshops that, um, you went to, and since many of us went to the same workshop, because there was not, there was a limited amount of workshops because of COVID, um, that we should be, um, sharing with people about what we have learned. And then my other attend, attendance, um, was at the Grattan Public School Community Meeting around the busing. Um, I attended, um, on behalf of the board. Um, hearing, I think we've gone through all of our communications, um. So, uh, just to remember, we've got some of the, the dates coming up, um, and that, uh, we have a, we have the maybe the whole meeting is on the sixth, and then, uh, December thirteenth, uh, we'll have a special board meeting about five forty-five, where, um, the town, the town clerk will come and, um, do the oath of office to our new board members and to our, um, current board members that have continued on with the term. Um, and then we'll go into our regular board meeting on the thirteenth, and then we're off for a winter, um, break. Um, and suggested items, I just wanted to say, um, I've got the seal, seal of the bileiteracy. Um, and also, um, I'm gonna refer, um, Isaiah's to the policy and to the finance committee. Um, and Jen, if you can do that, that would be great. Um, are there other agenda topics that we need to get on to the docket?
I think we were looking at a finance and facilities meeting too, Jay and Ken. I think we were looking at a finance and facilities meeting, too, Jay and Ken, was it the seventh, maybe? Tuesday. So, to get one of those in, too, before the end of the, yeah. So December seventh, so.
A day that will live in Any other agenda topics? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.